All right, Mr. Carney.
Here.
Dr. Kim?
Here.
Dr. Bettis?
Here.
Smore?
Here.
For like his absent, Ross Striven is present, but he's in the restroom. Ms. Herr Johnson?
Here. All right, have a public hearing, physical education waiver. We have public comment from Jeff. There is still, all right. It's an aspect, exactly.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jeff Featherstone, I am currently a PE teacher at Julian Middle School. I just completed my 29th year in the district and I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak about the PE middle school waiver. During my career in District 97, all the electives had the same number of minutes as core classes, and with the new schedule, this has not happened. The new schedule will have PE on an A D schedule, similar to last, but we're cutting the minutes from 75 to 50, while core and other electives will have class every day. This means that the students will miss 75 minutes of physical education every two weeks with the new schedule compared to the current schedule. But if we were to have this elective physical education be an everyday elective, it would increase us to 250 minutes per week. While best practice is for students to have daily physical education, state guidelines require physical education a minimum of three days a week, and yet we are unable to make this happen with the new schedule. In the information shared with the community, it would say that students get 17 minutes of luxury sets daily with equipment, and there is a need for that, but this would mean that a student on their off day would only get 17 minutes of activity. Also, what happens when it rains or in the winter? That student's gonna get no activity. Also, how much equipment will be available? If half the grade levels outside, there will be a need of a lot of equipment, and what's gonna happen when this equipment goes missing? Physical education benefits the whole child, which is a goal of a portrait of an eighth grader. A holistically well-studied is one of the eight dimensions, and if the eight, and this is a quote from our district website, "If the eight dimensions represent the culmination of a thoughtful and collaborative community engagement process," and each word was carefully selected by our District 97 design team to reflect both the educational expertise and the values and priorities of our community, why are we cutting physical education minutes? The benefits of physical education in schools include: physical health, improved cardio fitness, stronger bones and muscles, improved flexibility, and helps retain a healthy weight. Also, it helps with better sleep, promotes more restful and consistent sleep pattern. Healthy habits fosters lifelong fitness habits and reduces the risk of chronic diseases. Mental health reduces stress, anxiety, and depression. Cognitive development improves concentration, memory, and academic performance. Finally, it also helps with social skills and encourages teamwork, leadership, and cooperation through group activities. Are these not things we want for our students? I hope this is not too late to fix this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deanna Hart?
Good evening, good evening. I am Deanna Hart, I am a current PE teacher at Julian, and I just finished my 23rd year at Julian. And I probably, I'm gonna try to skip around and not repeat a lot that Jeff said, but I'm just here basically to defend our field and, you know, with the schedule change, our minutes are being cut drastically. And over the years, throughout my career, our PE program, we're really proud of our PE program and our department has built, that we have built throughout the time I've been here, and we especially pride ourselves in our ability to adapt and create a fresh curriculum over the years to keep our students engaged, active, and healthy. I'm disappointed to hear that our district will be applying for a waiver since our new middle school schedule will not be in compliance with the state's PE requirements. It almost seems as if we're asking for forgiveness, we're not doing it the right way out of the gates, so it's just kind of a little bit like, I wish we didn't have to ask for this waiver. But anyways, I was gonna talk about the recess, but Jeff already covered a lot of those. But PE classes do offer a structured and safe environment for physical activity and for learning to take place. It would be awesome, and I know it might be too late, but I'm just gonna still get out there, it would be awesome if we could consider making PE a daily part of our students' experiences. It would be awesome if we could create a new schedule that wouldn't need a waiver from the beginning. And I don't think it's too late to take a closer look at our middle school schedules and come up with something that fulfills PE and health requirements instead of applying for this waiver. Today, more than ever, students need movement and physical activity for mental health, and this waiver states that more time will be allotted for social-emotional learning, when in reality, this schedule change will not only cut down on PE time, it will dramatically decrease the amount of health curriculum. Health is, I think, the perfect place for social-emotional learning to take place. Health is gonna be going from over 2,000 minutes of instruction per year for the kids to only 750 minutes of instruction per year, which is also not in compliance, so we made a waiver for that. Again, I just hoping, I'm hoping it's not too late to take a closer look at our middle school schedules and come up with a plan that fulfills PE and health requirements instead of applying for this waiver. I know I'm probably too late in this, but just thought, had to put my, get out there and just, just to get it out there. So, thank you for listening. Thank you.
Catherine Brinkman?
Good evening, Superintendent Chau, members of the board, school and district staff, and community members. My name is Catherine Brinkman, and I teach health education at Julian Middle School. I'm here today as a concerned teacher, advocate, and member of our Oak Park community. I stand before you to raise a concern that should unite all of us regardless of background or ideology. The health, safety, and well-being of our children. Under next year's proposed schedule, our middle school health education classes are held for just six weeks per year, with classes lasting 25 minutes less per session than originally designed. That's approximately 25% less time spent per week compared to the prior structure. In total, this adds up to significantly less than the Illinois State requirement, which mandates at least 18 weeks of health education over the course of a student's middle school career. By holding classes every other day for 15 minutes, for, 15 minutes? This puts students at about three weeks of health class per year, which would make their total time in health education class only nine weeks throughout their entire middle school career, which is half of what is required. We're falling short of what our students are not just legally entitled to, but what they desperately need in today's environment. Now, let me be clear, this is not simply about checking a box, this is about preparing our students to make life-altering decisions in a world that exposes them to serious risks at increasingly younger ages. Since January 2024, Oak Park has reported multiple fentanyl-related overdose deaths, including seven in early 2024 alone. Vaping is now an epidemic among teens, according to the CDC, over 10% of middle school students have tried e-cigarettes beginning in sixth or seventh grade. Teen sexual activity is also starting earlier, the Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System reports that nearly 15% of students have had sexual intercourse by age 14. Peer pressure is cited as the top reason teens begin experimenting with drugs, alcohol, and sex. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, 70% of teens who start using drugs do so because of peer pressure. The ability to say no effectively is skill taught explicitly in quality health education is statistically correlated with reduced risk behavior. When we ask our educators to teach a full-year curriculum in a quarter of the time, we are forcing them to put, we are forcing them to cut content that could literally save lives. Do we cut education about consent and boundaries, about mental health and suicide prevention, about nutrition, physical wellness, or substance abuse? The question is, how can we afford to cut any of it? We're essentially gambling that students will somehow absorb these vital life skills through osmosis, or that their families will fill in the gaps, but the data tells us that this doesn't happen. In fact, schools are often the only place where children receive accurate, evidence-based information about their bodies, emotions, relationships, and choices. I urge the board to consider the following steps. Restore health education to be at least every day during their six-week slot of health to begin aligning with state standards. Reinvest the full class time, as this will ensure students receive meaningful and equitable instruction delivered with fidelity. Conduct a curriculum audit to identify what will need to be cut and what impact it will have on learning outcomes. Engage parents and students in feedback sessions to help prioritize what is most needed in the health curriculum. This is not just an educational issue, this is a public health issue and a moral imperative. Our students are telling us through data, behavior, and outcomes that they need more guidance, not less. I ask the board to listen, not just to me, but to the research, and the numbers, and to our kids. Let's make a commitment that every student in District 97 receives a full, comprehensive, and impactful health education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Kell?
Good evening, Peggy Kell, A15 South Humphrey, nice to see you again. With the new middle school, with, with the new Julian Middle School was built in 2000, great care with, and planning went into design of the physical education facilities. Three locations for classes were designed because we had three classes per period, about 120 kids per period. The third-floor gym, second floor's fitness room, the first-floor main gym. Finally, having sufficient spaces for activities, the department and curriculum flourished. Students had the opportunity to play individual sports for the first time, badminton, ping-pong, and, and yes, pickleball. A variety of team sports along with dance. The fitness room was well-used along with, for cardio and strength training. Students even had the opportunity to go off-site for bowling during PE classes at that time. Julian's physical education program received their first blue ribbon in 2007 from IFRD, the Illinois Association of Health Physical Education Recreation and Dance. This award is for exemplary program status based on the Illinois State Learning Standards, while employing a variety of activities to meet the needs of all students. Slowly, though, the middle school physical education has been diminished. Health classes were once part of the team rotation, then came out of PE class time. Block scheduling comes along and reduces the program further to every other day. Now, with the proposed schedule to, to continue PE every other day, a waiver is being considered. This new schedule plan also includes having no physical education scheduled during lunch periods, so that the field and other facilities can be used as recess for students. Recession for middle school students. Don't think I've ever heard that before, at least not in the professional circles. As a teacher in District 97 for over 25 years, I understand all too well the pattern of changing scheduling, curriculum, priorities, every few years. Backlory program came and went. Block scheduling, come and go. Advisory, came and went. A daily program of physical activities for middle schoolers has been shown to improve mood, enhance social skills, and reduce anxiety, to say nothing of the benefit of moving for, to burn off energy. Had we learned nothing from the lockdown during COVID. The district is deluding itself if they think before and after-school clubs and sports will reach all students and be a meaningful substitute for daily PE. And yes, there's waivers for our elementary schools that are used because there's no space to have PE there in the elementary schools. There's every day, there's not enough teachers to teach PE every day in the elementary school. But that's not the case at our middle schools. These buildings were built to reflect and accommodate what's important for this age group, a team of teachers for a group of students. Elective choices for students, so students can explore new subjects and space for daily structured physical activity. The district is missing the mark with this plan for a waiver. You must do better. I'm retired, if you need to look at this again, I offer my volunteer services to be on any committee for the summer, so that we can hit the ground running with a beneficial program for all students come August. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Rocco?
Good evening, my name is Tom Rocco, I am a 23, for this is my 23rd year, I just finished teaching here in Oak Park, I did my first 13 years at Bi Elementary School, and I just completed my 10th year at, well, I was at both Brooks and Julian for a little bit, now I've been at Brooks for the past four years. So, I am here because I'm speaking on behalf of a student named London Jordan, she's a graduate of Brooks from this past year as an eighth grader. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight, so she wrote me a letter that she would like me to share with you guys, so I am speaking on London's behalf. And here's the letter. Garrett D. 97 Board, my name is London Jordan, and I just graduated from Brooks Middle School. Based on experience and research, I believe there are several arguments for why the allotted physical education time should be left as-is, and I think about every fitness website in existence would agree with me. For starters, PE has tons of great benefits. After sitting in cramped desks for hours with only passing periods to get blood moving, PE is a time for students to let off steam and take their mind off their assignments. Many, many middle schoolers already don't get to move around a lot because of homework, screen addictions, et cetera, so PE is a great way to help them get off their phones and out into the real world. In addition, PE also helps kids build stronger, healthier bodies and boost their mood in the way that hours of TikTok reels cannot. Not only will they be happier, but they'll feel physically better and enjoy numerous benefits such as heart health, stronger muscles, and better endurance. Physical education isn't just exercising, part of it is teaching kids these benefits, as well as other ways to keep them physically and mentally healthy. Many of these topics and more are covered in health classes, which for Brooks takes place at the same time as PE with rotations. Cutting PE time would mean cutting health classes, which are chock-full of very important information, such as birth age, CPR, sex education, drugs, staying safe, and more. This is very important for kids to know, and it can keep them safe and away from a lot of stuff that could really hurt them. It could even end up saving a life. Health class also provides a lot of information about healthy diet and things that help kids be healthier and happier, just like physical education is a part of the curriculum. "Physical education isn't about forcing kids to get some exercise and learn muscle structure because it will be better for them," it quotes. "It is also fun, I've seen plenty of games that last for an hour or more, only because when the players are having too much fun and the whistle is blown, then they get a little upset and they don't wanna play," that's, again, her words, "and they wanna keep playing." Just that band and orchestra classes are offered to encourage kids to love music, PE encourages kids to pursue their passions. In many cases, PE may even be the class that helps kids find that passion in the first place. Plus, playing all those team sports is a team-building exercise, a vital skill for kids to have later in life as they enter jobs and careers. The result of all the above is a happier, healthier kid who is better prepared to enter the real world. This is why I believe that cutting PE would be disastrous for future generations of kids who will be coming to the District 97 Middle Schools. Thank you for your time, sincerely, London. I had the privilege and honor of teaching London all three years in PE at Brooks Middle School, and without a doubt, one of the best students I've taught in my 23 years of teaching, great student. She couldn't be here again because she's at a marching band camp, and I think the thing that really stood out to me as a teacher is when you have kids come up to you and say, "I really wanna get stronger for, you know, football or basketball," and when she said marching band, it kinda took me by surprise and made me realize that, you know, I, it made me think about what I need to go outside of my box and thinking just in pure, true athletics and understanding that Bravo, arts, different types of band, orchestra, physical education plays a vital role in all of those areas. So, thank you for your time, I hope you all have a wonderful summer vacation, and, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearing on physical education waiver. Can I get a motion to close session, or close this portion of the meeting? To close the hearing?
Hi, hi. I move that the Board of Education at Oak Park Elementary School, District 97, moved to close the public hearing on the district's physical education waiver request.
Seven. Thank you. We'll now move into our regular scheduled public hearing.
Just really quick, you have--
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Ross Striven?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Dr. Perez?
No. No, this is just--
We're closing, this is closing.
To close, to do--
I'll just--
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Ms. Herr Johnson?
Yes.
Smore?
Yes.
We can keep it open if you want.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, now, we have public comments. Paul Rubio?
I was keeping track of my time. Okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Two days ago, on Sunday, June 8th, I celebrated the 20th anniversary of my Julian eighth-grade graduation. The class of 2005 was distinguished as the first group of students to start as sixth graders in the current Julian building, whose construction was completed in 2002, and then be there for three years. While I was nervous about starting there, subconsciously I felt a sense of excitement walking into a brand-new building, and I'm grateful for all who made it possible for me and my classmates. My three years at Julian had an enormously positive impact on me. While all experiences in our lives influence and shape us in some way, my time at Julian truly defined me into the person I am today. I engaged my interest in an enhanced way, especially participating in the National Geography League competition. I grew in a sense of patriotism that inspired me to do my civic duty in serving this country. I experienced the diversity of Oak Park in a deeper way. For example, I met many Jewish people there at Julian among my classmates, and learning about their religion and culture caused me to turn inwardly and reflect more on who I am and appreciate myself and my faith even more. As a result, even at a public middle school, I experienced an abundant blossoming of great zeal for my Christian faith. I was inspired to embark on a journey that led me from middle schooler to middle school catechist, a role I've had for 12 years at Ascension Church here in Oak Park. I hand on the faith to my students, many of whom are Julian students. In that light, it was so fitting that June 8th this year was Pentecost Sunday, a major Christian holiday that celebrates the descent of the Holy Spirit that brought the church alive. Furthermore, red is the liturgical color for Pentecost, and that's the color the captain Downey wore on the evening of Wednesday, June 8th, 2005, the graduation ceremony. Part of the Catholic tradition is the Pentecost Novena, a nine-day prayer devotion bridging the gap from Ascension Thursday to Pentecost Sunday. This year, it began on May 30th, and on that day, I went back to Julian to be a presenter at their Career Exploration Day, and I'm wearing the shirt from that event. I had such a fabulous time being back at Julian, sharing about what I do for my work as a library cataloguer with current students. I received such great hospitality, and I enjoyed seeing how the students engaged with the activity I gave them and the questions they asked. As I reconnect with Julian, I reminded of a stanza in the poem "A Porterrito Regreso", written by Jose Gautier Benitez. This stanza served as the inspiration for the title of Sonia Sotomayor's memoir. "Forgive the exile, this sweet frenzy, I return to my beloved world, and I am in love with the land where I was born." Those words truly resonate with my recent anniversary celebration. Indeed, these past few days have given me so much reason to celebrate because my Julian experience brought me great joy, has brought me great joy for the past two decades, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to spend a few minutes sharing my thoughts with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We will now move on to the superintendent overview. So, thanks, everyone, good to be here tonight. For the superintendent overview tonight, I have on the next slide, oh, here we go. Two different areas, want to take a moment to recognize, as we close out the school year, thanks, Michael, the June celebrations, and also briefly, like, what's ahead as we look toward the next year. So, I want to take a moment to recognize and thank, you know, all the celebrations and our community for all the celebrations. Around the corner this June, we have Pride Month and Juneteenth, and so we also have our Brooks students just tomorrow, right here at Village Hall, who've been selected to present their inspiring speeches, so we have them here on this slide, and I'm gonna be there, and looking forward and welcome everyone to join us for, you know, how we celebrate and elevate identity in our village. We also celebrated right in this room, two weeks ago, when was that, last week, our retirees, and so want to acknowledge and thank them for their service in our district. It was wonderful to circle up with them and hear all the different affirmations about how much they value their time here with us, and we wish them well, and we have their phone numbers, because we will be calling them back to be substitute teachers. So, you know, as we look forward to next year, these are our four transformation goals, we've seen these before, we put these up, you know, this first area, leading, learning, and celebrating together, underneath them, we have two, you know, major sub-goals. The second area, the second transformation goal, we design for all, this is our work in schools, to make sure that we are designing our instruction, our experiences, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, in terms of the master schedule for middle school. We align our resources, you will also hear about this tonight, in terms of the master facility plan, and of course, our school and community safety. And then, we learn everywhere, is our understanding that in order to really get to the full vision that our district has for all children, we need to think about that portrait of an Oak Park eighth-grade graduate, and how do we extend the expertise of the school district to out-of-school time and to early childhood? That's how we're gonna level the playing field and make sure we get to excellence for everyone. And so, as we look to next year, we're looking, you know, some of the highlights on our minds is really in terms of that first area, upholding our values through really authentic engagement, thinking about how we move from transactional to really slow-down engagement, our professional learning, getting closer and more connected around what we're here to do together, and then celebrating and elevating who we are, and how we're proud to do that in an unwavering way. We design for all, we're launching and refining our new master schedule, and talk a little bit more, like I said, about that in just a minute. And also, in terms of the master facility plan, really thinking about how sustainability, how does that come to play in the decisions we make, and how do we make, take those long-term assessments of what we're doing and, and look for those investments? And then, bringing the portrait, the portrait to life, thinking about what are those signature experiences where we want people to say, "You went to Oak Park, oh, then in third grade, you must have," or in fifth grade, "Are you probably," because those are those signature experiences with our, within our school district and within our community. So, those are some of the great things that are on our radar. I want to start by affirming and thanking the teachers who, who spoke just now about, about the PE waiver and, and the, you know, the discussion about our master schedule. I want to just acknowledge that, you know, we had, right here in a few minutes in the room, we had current teachers who are passionate about what they do and why, and how that, how their work and their practice impacts our students. We had a retired teacher, a community member, we had a student whose voice was spoken into the room, and it's that kind of advocacy and that kind of engagement of voices that actually got us also to this master schedule. So, there was a lot of teacher participation, administrators, getting voices from students, getting voices from parents and, and from our staff, to really wrestle out what should this schedule look like. So, I want to affirm the teachers that were in the room today to advocate for their perspectives, as well as all of the teachers and administrators and students and staff and families who weighed in on the master schedule that, that we are implementing. That includes meeting this PE waiver, but all of that participation is how we do this work really well. You know, there's always trade-offs when we're talking about the finite, you know, time, we can't do everything within the school day, but I also want to say that this is a, an ongoing process, so the PE waiver that's in front of the board today is not forever, it's for a three-year period of time over which we need to assess, like, how is it going, and, and really kind of wrestle with what are the trade-offs and what are some adjustments we need to make? And so, really making sure that we are, you know, continuing to assess how are things going, and how are we looking for those opportunities for daily engagement? So, we'll have our team up here to answer the board's questions, because we're eager to make sure that we're affirming, like, holistic wellness, certainly, like, time with a PE teacher is, like, crucially part of that, but then, all the other ways we're thinking about students really owning that, that opportunity to move their bodies and develop. So, you know, and we always have our let's-talk for the ongoing conversation, so that's the overview for today, and then we can get started with the presentations.
We have the point one, to the middle school for exploration, exploration update, sorry.
So, we have Dr. De Leon, Assistant Superintendent of Middle Schools coming up, as well as Tracey Ham, our Director of Universal Design for Learning, and Dr. Ebony Lofton, who is our Chief Learning Innovation Officer.
All right. So good evening, poor members and community. Thank you for the opportunity to also share with you some of the work that we have done regarding about career exploration. Very excited to have the opportunity to share with you tonight so far of work. As I thought, as I was mentioning, a lot of this kind of falls on that transformational goal or with this, of the designing role, with the idea of that middle school redesigning as we look at as part of the big package of how things fit together into this work. Want to acknowledge, like, all the team that has been participating into this process and really coming up to this point. We're very fortunate to have representation from our staff and really multiple perspectives throughout this work. We're looking forward for your work ahead of us as we continue this collaboratively with our staff. So the agenda for today, we're going to be talking about the background, what career exploration. We're going to make some connections with Portrait, and also we'll be sharing our next steps in your time. So we talked about our why, as we know, like, middle school is a critical time for students as they are developing those skills and thinking skills about their aspirations. The career exploration also boosts that engagement, opportunities for them to start thinking about the planning and really making those connections of what they're learning with the real-life, real-world opportunities. As you can see, there's a lot of benefits right there listed, positive outcomes, student concerns, and effective programs. For overall, what career exploration helps out in middle school? It's about starting addressing those anxieties of the students, but also start like preparing them to plan, but also to start thinking about the axes that they have and advocate for themselves about their future. So I think that provides that window, that opportunity for students to learn what potentially things could be. And then for that, also provides the tools about how they can engage with that. So a lot of this work is also part of a mandate from different states. It's part of the requirements that we have. So there's a framework that is called like PACE framework. It stands for a PACE, a post-secondary career exploration. And in this framework, it provides key points that students need to meet as they go through the transition from year to year, about what is expected for them to gain through this process. This is also frameworks that they are developmentally appropriate. And there also is a sequence, not only in middle school, but also on access to the high school. So the requirements by July first of this year is that we adopt a framework, that we have adopted and implementing activities according to this framework. And then also that these resources or these issues are posted on our website. It's part of the requirements that we have for July first of two thousand and twenty-five. That's why it's also important, so pieces of sharing this and from our initial information about how we're meeting these expectations, but also how we are projecting for the future and the work ahead of us, of how things are going to change. So as I was mentioning, there are key points, and this is an example of the framework that is provided by the state. And this is where you get to see the sixth grade components, the components that they are targeting in sixth grade, and then seventh grade and eighth grade, and how do they work together.
Yeah. So we're really excited about this work, and I think one of the best things that we were able to do just as a team when we first started thinking about it was making those intentional connections to the portrait. So the reminder here is that the portrait really is about those core competencies and that the community has agreed upon to make sure that we are having a collective vision for all of our graduates as they leave us, starting in pre-K and continuing all the way through eighth grade. So as a reminder, we have those eight dimensions, and we're really excited about kind of how that came together, where the community, the teachers, everyone's fingerprint was on kind of what this collective vision would be for our eighth-grade students. And so when we think about one of the dimensions, Career Explorer, we really want graduates, when they leave us, to be able to explore a wide range of careers along with their qualifications, and that includes college and non-college and trade pathways. So the sky's the limit in terms of what we want to expose students to and have them have that kind of opportunity to experience different careers and options. And so we just shared a few pictures for our college for kids. At Triton, it's actually going on right now. We're heading into our third day tomorrow. But we have spring break and then last summer's pictures up there because these are the students we want to really kind of talk to, to see where we missed the mark, where we hit the mark, and what we need to think about in terms of as we explore career exploration, both inside and outside of school, how we can make sure that those portrait connections live and breathe in that work.
So in talking about the implementation planning, we have come together this spring and worked with a core group that Dr. De Leon had shared a few. But we have also taken the time to reach out to all of our middle school staff, certified and non-certified, to help us consider what would be important for our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students to understand and to engage with relating to career exploration. So at the end of April in two thousand and twenty-five, we met as a core group with our middle school administration, as well as our student success coaches and our UDL core leaders to be able to consider what would be important in learning about career exploration. From there, we reached out and had our first meeting last week in a group of teaching assistants and teachers to talk through what we want to communicate to our community through our website, including that information around PACE. But also, how do we want to develop our curriculum as we explore different career pathways for students? We are coming together next week to talk through what our website should hold for our community so that they understand the work that we're going to be doing. And then we will be meeting throughout the summer and into the fall to talk around specifically, what do we want our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students to participate in as they learn about their career options? I'm not sure if any of you had an opportunity, I understand for Dr. De Leon that he had provided you with some demo links for our School Links, which is a platform that allows us to help students explore their interests around careers, around things that they get excited about, so that they can take a look further as to how that can become something that they may learn more about or consider as a lifelong goal for their career. This is going to be a second half of our work. We're very excited to share that the School Links platform is something that also our companion district, Oak Park River Forest, also utilizes. So it's something that we can work hand-in-hand with our high school. Is there any questions that we can answer for you around career exploration?
Were you going around the table, or should I just ask?
We could go around the table. We have something similar at the high school, so the students will get a preview by using it here in the middle school, so that's encouraging. I actually love all their interest inventories, and so more of a comment, not a question. Joan, or Gavin, whoever wants to go.
I don't have one.
That was my question.
All right. I think we're ready. So I have more of a comment as well, and that is just to be mindful as we're moving forward with material as much as we were with all of our other curricula that we have been coming up with, that we are looking for people, representations of people with different diversity, ethnic backgrounds, races, people with disabilities as well, just to make sure, because see it and be it are related. So just make sure that we are being cognizant of that in the materials and the people that we bring in.
I can add to that. I think one of the cool thing about what we're doing, I just saw the PACE framework, which is kind of like the baseline, and then also how School Links meet those components. But that also means that that has to stay there. We can actually supplement and add things, make it like all program. And that's where you saw in the timeline that Tracy shared with you, that we are planning bringing the team into really audit what's happening in our classroom, how we can leverage on that. We have career exploration days, events, so they're happening. There's a lot of really great learning opportunities that happen in the day-to-day in our class, in classrooms, multiple levels, and how do we tie them into that? So that framework I just saw, that's kind of like the base, but also the idea is that we build on it to create our D ninety-seven framework of career exploration that ties to the portrait of the graduate. So as a project, you know, that we're going to be building along the way, we're meeting the requirements from the state, but also the end goal is to tailor it to our community, to tailor it to our students, to tailor our needs as well.
Thank you.
I guess this is more of a comment than a question, although if you have thoughts on it, that would be great. But one of the things that I think, one, I think this is great. I'm really glad that you all are doing it. And one of the things that I think would be, could be particularly powerful is to think about how this notion of Career Explorer ties to our other kind of values and priorities. And in particular, the one that comes to mind for me is like the change agent one, but just helping kids think about the careers that affect the issues, community, et cetera, that they care about, and also kind of conversely, like, being able to look at potential careers. It's not, part of it should, obviously, I like to do this, I'm good at this, et cetera, but also understanding, I care about X, you know, how does this sort of impact on that for better or worse, you know, that kind of thing? I think that being a global connector, being a change agent, connected to community, really giving kids a sense of agency over the things that they care about is really important. And so I didn't look through all of the options, and I haven't explored the links, but I, hopefully, there's a way to sort of, my concern would be that an off-the-shelf thing wouldn't necessarily consider that or elevate that kind of consideration. But I think for us, for our community, those are prominent considerations that we would want to lift up for kids and help them kind of factor that into their exploration.
Joan?
Well, I actually do have one, sorry. I know, like, when they get to high school, like, students who are like in, pull out like resource classrooms, have like a life skills transitions course. Are they also included in this? And I'm just like kind of thinking back to Nancy's comment about like the, not just the representation in terms of who shows up, but also thinking about kind of the array of opportunities. I'm just wondering if you also kind of build that in?
So the nice component, I think that will supplement and support this, is our students that identified with IP's. This is a necessary component that we complete in our eighth-grade year. So it really does talk with them about what are their interests, what would that lead to in terms of a career study or a trade and those types of things. So we already start talking about that already. This is to help supplement those types of activities that we have going on.
Okay. Great.
And just kind of thinking about our college for kids experience right now, even in summer school, about forty percent of our students identify with a disability or have an IP. So we've been really intentional about kind of figuring out how to make sure that we have access and entry for everyone, but also making sure they're having a good time and the same experience around getting that opportunities.
I just wanted, like, just kind of ask. So Becky mentioned that the high school has some similar, and it was really interesting. I love the fact how they use alumni, and so you have tons of alumni, like, people graduated in the eighties, nineties, and beyond, who were like, "I came back to my alma mater, and this made me so happy." So similarly, like, getting the community and alumni, like, making that special shout-out to the community, because people are always like excited to come back to where they kind of started. And then if there is any opportunity for partnerships, so that you guys aren't doing so much work to re-visit the will when they've already done a really great job. And then that way, to Becky's point, they'll say like, "Oh, yeah, we did this." But not in a like, "Oh, we already did this," but like, they kind of know what it is, and they're excited about it. So those are just two quick call-outs.
Thank you. Becky actually just added to that, the going through this process and kind of getting ourselves immersed with that. We were in a training, and we had the opportunity to maybe operate personally charged, and we connected right away, and we were actually in the same table talking about this work. So the opportunities, as you were mentioning, are huge.
Any more questions, comments? All right. Thank you, guys, very much.
That is eight point two. Make sure I'm remembering. Eight point two, Master Facilities Plan Update.
Yep. So for this item, we have our colleagues from STR, Megan and Jennifer. And also our Senior Director, John Hallman, as well as Michael Aaron Stewart, our Chief Victory Officer. And Megan, I don't remember your last name, so.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here again and provide you with an update of what we've been working on lately. A little bit about the agenda, we're going to review the timeline again, share a progress update, and talk a little bit about required maintenance and some of our 2026 work that's coming ahead. So our timeline, we are currently within Phase Three, this conceptualization phase. So we've completed a lot of our facility assessment surveys and gathered a lot of data. And at this point, we're kind of trying to organize all of that data so that we can be ready to hit the ground running in August, September, and October to really coordinate with the FAC committee about how to prioritize a lot of the work and the challenges and the opportunities that we have identified over the past few months. So on track for a December presentation to the board with the master facility plan. Since we last met, we have continued to work with the FAC committee. May twentieth and June ninth, just last night, we met with them again. The Sustainability Exchange got together on May twentieth. We've continued with confirming some information regarding program with principals, with an elementary case study meeting on the seventeenth. We actually met with the separate feeder school principals in order to confirm some of our assumptions, and then also with the middle schools on March twentieth and April tenth as well. And our last board update was on the evening. I'm going to turn it over to Megan to do a little bit of the progress update.
So I'll dive in a little bit more. Last we spoke, we were working a lot on the capacitating space utilization, kind of walked through what that looks like. And at this point, now that we've evaluated all those spaces, we're in report compilation mode on all fronts for that. And with that, as Jennifer mentioned, we didn't meet with the principals from all the elementary and middle schools, so really wanted to make sure that they were involved, making sure we're evaluating all the space needs and criteria communally across the district and making sure we're able to have that really open discussion and feedback. The facility conditions assessments, we have officially walked through all of the schools across the disciplines. So now that's being organized into a series of worksheets for each facility to evaluate and help us to prioritize for potential next steps and improvements. So to kind of walk through what that's actually looking like, there's four categories that we divided the improvements into site, building envelope, architectural elements, building systems. And this list is being compiled from a series of places, making sure we bring it all together in one place. So looking at the facility condition surveys, so those walkthroughs I just mentioned, the space utilization walkthroughs, and input from principals, PTO comments from walkthroughs, communications from the principals to building main grounds, and case action items. So really, the goal is to bring all of these together into kind of this one space.
Sorry. Oh, yeah. Can you talk a little bit, or can you briefly, is it possible to briefly, the category site, building, envelope, what are some of those terms?
Yes. So site is thinking like landscape, hardscape, things like that, around the building. And then building envelope is more things like rooms, walls, windows, doors. And then architectural elements, a lot of those are things within the building. And then architectural elements, a lot of those are things within the building. So that might be stair treads, that could be interior doors, casework, floors. I didn't say already. And then building systems would be mechanical, electrical, plumbing, different kinds of things.
So I do not know any of these things, but I'm sure there are people watching also. So I just want to be mindful as people are watching to understand.
Sure.
Yes.
Does that help or did that?
Did that into.
Any access, thank you.
Good.
And so I'll dive a little bit more into how we're assessing across these worksheets. So kind of zoom in from the last page, looking at the item description. So again, when I was saying site, there's kind of that hardscape section and then thinking a description of each item, the condition it's in, and then an estimated cost. So assembling that information and then using that information to evaluate against the guiding principles and using those to, all those pieces to prioritize the improvements and create a target year to do this work, which will come after that prioritization. So it's kind of a series of things all pulling into one place to prioritize together. The conditions legend of each thing is identified against good, fair, poor, critical, which is being evaluated by the wider team. And then will be prioritized in collaboration with FAC, the District Ninety-seven side and staff and our team. And the in-progress guiding principles that we're working, we're working through and iterating upon are having ready to open buildings, enhance safety, aligning with case goals, arts and culture investments, assessing critical infrastructure needs, community support opportunities, educational spaces aligned with curriculum and addressing health and safety, health and life safety requirements. So that's kind of how, that's the criteria in addition to that kind of poor to good that we're helping to prioritize as a wider. And last but not least, the safety and security analysis. I think that's something that we mentioned last time that we were moving forward with. But we will be scheduling those assessments with the West Fork team, but we got good news. But we have a few, a few of them at no cost because they're able to reallocate resources from other districts who deny us. So we're working on scheduling that to integrate into our findings as well. Number two, check.
As we touched on at our last update, there are some immediate required maintenance items that we are trying to focus on. And I think a lot of this is stemming out of, there clearly have been some uncertain and volatile financial things going on in the climate these days. So just having a very thoughtful way of planning and forecasting in this, in this kind of uncertainty is where the district is going right now. So as we, as we know, things are probably only going to get more expensive. We want to be able to plan and start addressing these things in the summer of twenty twenty-six as we continue to evaluate and plan ahead for the longer term of keeping your assets in good functioning order in the future. So the charge has been to allocate around four million dollars of total project cost for the summer of twenty twenty-six to address some immediate needs that are, are not going to be putting us into a, we're trying to select items that won't require a lot of extra thought and not done, not be done in a thoughtful way, but can be easily addressed over the twenty twenty-six summer. Additionally, John's team will have a contingency for emergency repairs of around four hundred thousand dollars. But the commitment is still to continue alongside of the, these, these summer projects for next year, the master facility plan, so that we can additionally forecast and plan ahead for the years to come. So and some of the reasoning for this is that the master facility plan is planned to be rolled out in December. And it's ideally the time to put projects out to bid for a summer project is the fall before that, so September, October. So because that doesn't quite align, we're looking to kind of go in two different directions so we can simultaneously work on the summer twenty twenty-six work at the same time we continue on with the master facility plan work. So we, we are, obviously, we're going to continue working with the core team. We have been contacting with, Bulleye and Andrews are going to help us do some estimating of those light items that we input on all of those worksheets that Megan shared with you earlier. We will be working with FAC starting in August to start taking a look at all of that information and further prioritizing and figuring out how we can work with the district then to take a look at the annual funding level as we move forward from starting in the summer of twenty twenty-seven and beyond. And just to give you an idea of kind of how that's going to work simultaneously, we are confirming right now the summer of twenty twenty-six work. We'll be working on those construction documents over the summer. And at the same time, we will also be doing the data input into the worksheets for the different schools and working with Bulleye on those estimates. We will reconvene in August, September with FAC to help them not only, give them an opportunity to review the construction documents for the work that's going to be going out to bid for the twenty twenty-six summer, but also then begin the prioritization work for the master facility plan. And then we'll roll out the bids, we'll review those bids with FAC. They will bring those to the board probably in November. And at the same time, we'll be working with FAC and Fork and putting together our master facility plan information to present to you in December. And then we'll kind of start the whole process again over the next year. So once the master facility plan is approved and adopted, we'll do a reassessment, make sure that we have the critical items identified for the summer of twenty twenty-seven, begin that work again and still incorporating FAC along the way with not only confirming scope, reviewing estimates and the documents to, for, for their expertise and input as well. And then again, rolling out those bids in the fall of twenty twenty-six for the summer of twenty twenty-seven. So our next steps will be finalizing the summer of twenty twenty-six scope items, getting those estimated and putting together those construction documents. We'll review all of that with FAC. We will kick off the summer of twenty twenty-six project planning and then continue with the master plan work as described, data input, getting estimates and collaborating with the core team. Are there any questions?
John?
Thanks for that presentation. It was actually really good. I shouldn't say it was, I shouldn't say actually.
It was good.
I'll take it.
Really good presentation.
I, because my kids came from Lincoln and I know Lincoln parents always ask, like, is air conditioning somewhere in this? Because I know like some of the buildings are old and we've gotten a lot of letters in the past because of increasing temperatures. And I know you talked about climate change was also kind of taken into consideration. But is there kind of a long-term plan for trying to retrofit some of those classrooms? Or that's just not as high enough on the priorities?
What I will say is that the, the work that we've done to air condition this school to this point, we're part of a referendum initiative. So I think that.
It's not a priority? In terms of critical improvements?
That may be fair to say. However, if, if it was a board directive that, that it's, you know, I think it's something that needs to be discussed further, but right now it's not one of the things that's going to keep them filled with. And the amount of years, of days, I think this year that moved to the point where air conditioning is needed has not been many.
It is, it is one of the things on our list to be talked about and prioritized through this process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just because I know we, as those days peak, we get the, we get.
Right, and yeah, I know. There, there are a few days, but they're allowed.
Yeah, I think that's.
Nancy?
So kind of tangential to what John just brought up. As we're looking at the priorities, are we coming up with ones that are, honestly, if we, if we have outside funding, if a grant came in, we would do it, but otherwise not. I'm thinking in particular, for example, of our middle school science rooms, which are functional at this time. And yet, you know, last year we had a sixth grade science, or it was the year before, a sixth grade science class on a carpeted room trying to do labs, right? So are, are you gathering information on things like that that maybe aren't in the cards in our current budget, but could?
Yeah, we are always keeping an eye out for different grant opportunities. I mean, the fact that we have tender neutral bathrooms in both the middle schools is a result of a outside grant. So yes, and, and we have those, those challenges all listed on there so that, you know, the science classrooms and the art classrooms, the fact that there aren't the same amount that you have in sections that are required is on the list as a challenge and it's so that it's not lost and that we can keep finding synergies is really what I'm always trying to do. It's like if we're doing work in some place and we could, we know that there's another maybe educational element that we can solve at the same time. It's something that we really want to do because then we're really getting a larger bang for our buck for the district.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Her Johnson?
Megan?
Megan? I think since I'm one of the newest board members, so you might have questions that have come up before. So forgive me for that overlap, but the biggest concern was just, you said that there was a review of capacity analysis and that there's the required program spaces with principals, et cetera. You know, as you can imagine, there's some schools that have been updated that are just newer. And, you know, I can understand where the priorities would be for those that, schools that are running out of space or that, you know, are trying to move around schedules because there's not enough space. So I'm curious if your analysis covers those kind of pieces. I can only speak to Irving at this time.
It, it does. We, so as a team, we came up with a list of required program spaces and then we evaluated each facility as they're currently being used against that list. So there are definitely some disparities between the different facilities that who has what and who doesn't. And so we've noted those. And again, they'll be on the worksheet just so that we don't lose those things. And that report, we're hoping to put that out as, as a draft with the team and then get that out separately, even though it will be part of the, the final product at the end. But it, it kind of lives on its own and it, it does provide some good data about where, where the facilities stack up against the ultimate vision that the district has for different facilities, as well as just meeting the current curriculum needs and educational spaces. Like, you know, as you say, Irving does have some challenges with some spaces that are just.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think in terms of budgeting, I would love to hear, you know, how those priorities are being versus like, no offense, but air conditioning versus like, can we have, can we have, can we have enough space for after-school care? So that is something that's offered in most buildings, I think all of them now at this point. And sometimes like they have to cancel activities that have been paid for by parents to house other programs. So that happened in their auditorium, for example. Their auditorium also is like incredibly hot. And so on days when they have indoor recess, it's like not even sanitary in there just because of all the, yeah. So just things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
So taking all these things and making one question. We heard earlier today about PE waivers and the amount of physical activity and the importance of recess. Can you remind me, are there, what are the plans for like the outdoor space in terms of where the, where kids are gathering for like their free time? Are there plans for that?
We have not gotten in deep into that discussion. We have talked a lot, mostly about Julian just because of the, the safety concerns of the front. I understand that that, the new schedule is addressing that somewhat. But I, I think that that is an opportunity to have more discussion about exterior spaces like that. And safety, I think the, the other topic was making sure that there was a safe way for kids to even bike to school, which would, again, would get, add to the ability to be moving and things and having that safe route to get, yeah.
Yep, to school.
And Dr. Felicia Starks, our chief safety officer, was at back and is part of this conversation and part of this process too.
Yes.
Patch to patch and all that.
Second round of questions, anybody? Comments?
Thank you.
So one thing I would like to add, kind of quickly, is that while our initial plan is going to identify the first five years of recommended improvements, this isn't a five-year plan. This is designed to be a living document where we're reviewing it annually or at least every other year and rolling in the next five years and continue to keep moving forward on our list. So this is not intended to be a one-shot and done. This is intended to keep moving through our priorities.
Yeah, and I think that's probably always necessary, but especially with the kind of fiscal uncertainty, we're just going to need to be agile. But I really appreciate the way that you've designed this so that we have all the different information to bring to the board, you know, a recommendation for, for good decisions.
And we are having a joint meeting with the financial.
Fork.
Sounds like the financial advisory committee and Fork, which is a financial oversight, I miss the something committee.
I don't remember.
But the two groups will talk about our facilities, our buildings and then our finances, the volunteer, community, community will work together and we'll have that joint meeting to talk a little bit about where we are, what's happening, more, a little bit more in depth. So.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I did have one more comment, actually. Hasn't it more, is that okay? Okay, okay. I, I think the only other thing, the, the other reason why I brought up like Irving was just historically to review, parks were updated going from the north side then down to the south side in terms of community. So just thinking about historically, how we update things, that's something to consider. The other thing was that also happened with flooding in Oak Park. I know that's not the responsibility of D ninety-seven, but just something to keep in mind that when updates happen, it happens on the north side before it happens on the south side. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the comment. Thank you, thank you. Next we have the fourth agenda, can I get a motion?
Do you have to make that motion? Yes, so we have the, an amended personnel report.
President Moore? President Kim?
Yes, I motion that the Board of Education of District Ninety-seven approve the consent agenda with the personnel report affected, amended, sorry, to reflect administrator salaries for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Second.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Strubin? Actually, Ms. Ross Trubin?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Consent to the pass.
I'm going to go to Dr. so I can be Dr. Moore.
We can, we can just start, we can.
No, I have too much respect for the school. Next is, where am I going?
Action.
Ten-one.
Yep, sorry. My screen is so small, I feel like. Ten point one, school year twenty-five annual audit services contract.
So we brought this forward back in May and so we're bringing it forward for action tonight.
I move that the Board of Education approve engaging Baker Tilly US LLP to perform auditing services for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year as presented on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, not exceed seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Mr. Ross Trubin?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And President Moore?
Yes. Okay, now I figured out what. Ten point two, school year twenty-six annual contract renewal.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that, to say to the board that based on the questions we got last time, we did provide more detailed information. So if there are any additional questions, we're happy to answer them.
I motion that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School, District Ninety-seven, approve the SY twenty-six contracts for HR and business in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second, Mr. Carney. Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Trubin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I motion that the Board of Education approve contracts for teaching and learning in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents. And for student services, the amount of three million, three million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and four cents, which includes out of district tuition, a portion of which will be reimbursed through federal grants.
Second. Thank you.
I think that was first.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Trubin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ten point three, social. 10.3, social sciences curriculum recommendation. Can I get a motion?
I motioned that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District 97 approve the purchase of grade six through eight social science curriculum materials, social science textbook, and professional learning from discovery education at a cost of $92,280.
Second.
Ms. Ross Trubin?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Moore? President Moore?
Sorry, yes.
Yes? Our motion passes.
Do you want to call the details for discussion action?
Yes.
Next is discussion action, Smart Connection contract over $25,000. So we have Dr. Ebony Lofton is coming up. If the board has any questions, we're happy to, to answer them at this time.
Might not need to come up Ebony, there's no questions.
Right.
Are there any questions for Ebony before we make her get up?
She's already halfway.
I'm not going to make her walk up.
I have a question.
I was just all in one note. I mean, we know what it is, but like for those at home.
Sure, come on up Ebony.
You did save us a lot of time.
So we are proposing that the middle schools for students who receive tiered interventions are able to have access to Smart Connect, which is an executive functioning curriculum, which really focuses on task initiation, organization, all of those things that undergird academic skill development. We are proposing that we use Title I funding in the amount of $35,500 to support this effort. And our middle school teams have spent some time exploring and landing on this curriculum. So, and also have a plan to kind of see how it goes throughout the year.
And I always just comment, again, for people's understanding, this is money we are allocated because we're Title I building and so it's not like coming out of another pocket. So it's just for the public's understanding. So, this is, you use it or lose it.
In our order, I think Gavin was first.
It's hard.
All good, all good. I would, you alluded to this, but I was going to ask about the sort of how we assess if it's, if it's, one, I'm a big fan of executive functioning. I have two kids that could use more. And, but would love to hear how we plan to sort of take stock of what it's doing for us over the year so that if we're, when we're at the renewal stage, we have a good sense of whether we're getting over, we hope for.
Yep, so I know I'm speaking fully for the middle school team, but I think I'm confident in saying that we anticipate using this during our win time. And the teachers actually have access to the, the lessons. And so within that, there are a number of surveys and tools that they would use. So we'd see how students progress on those tools. But are also, we hope to kind of look at work completion because that's really the goal, to make sure that kids are starting and finishing tasks and organizing themselves in a way that kind of gets them to the goal line along with grades. So I think the team will kind of really coalesce around those, around some of those areas to figure out what we'll look at the end of the year. But I would imagine those would be the things that we would be looking for in terms of whether or not we continue to fund this effort.
That sounds great. When we get to that fork in the road, it would be great to hear about how those are going.
Absolutely.
Venus, Herr Johnson?
Gavin asked my question.
Nancy Ross Trubin.
Nancy Moore, Ross Trubin.
I have a small question, actually, since you're up here. So I know this is specifically targeting kids who are at tier three. Could this be, like, I don't know if it's like individual licensing or it's for the district, but like could people use this with other kids? Like if they want to use it during advisory or like whatever?
So the targeted group for Title I has to remain the same, but in terms of the teacher licenses, the teacher license and it serves 25 to 30 students. So they would be able to flexibly, so if students perhaps enter that targeted group and exit that targeted group, or if you want to think about following a student in a different class, the teacher has access to the materials.
But win time is for everyone, right? Because that was my question and then I didn't ask because you said when, which
Is when it would happen.
Right.
But you get different interventives for different things. So not everybody gets the same intervention.
Got it. My, my question was, I wanted to know if everyone, every student would have access to the Smart Connect.
In order to use a Title I funding, we would have to use it for a targeted group of students. So not every student would have access to it.
Oh, that is my question, okay.
But it would happen during win time.
No, I thought I got the answer to my question, what you said, but I didn't, so. Okay, so then my question is, even though kids may not qualify under Title I or have an IEP or even a 504, executive functioning skills are something that every student needs. So we have this targeted program for this group of students. What are we doing for, to enhance and develop executive functioning in the students that don't fall into this category?
Yep, so the cool thing is that the teachers are also getting training. So even if they're not using this specific curriculum, they're also still getting the knowledge
Yes.
to support all students if they don't follow within this, but that particular targeted group. So the materials and the lessons are for students in that targeted group, but the teacher knowledge could apply to, to any student.
And you did say that. So I sort of got an answer, but now, okay, putting it together. Done now.
So I was super excited today to learn that the library actually offers executive functioning services. And so I'm wondering, I'm making an explicit ask that this summer, as I'm working on a calendar and we're strategizing and building structures for our presentations for next school year, that we have like a targeted date. So whoever's reporting, we get that, to have a, a date or at least a month that we're going to get a update on this. Because I feel like we get a lot of updates and then we forget and then we're like, we heard about it sometime, a long time ago. So just being intentional, because I do, to everyone's point, I think that is so critical. And as someone whose child doesn't qualify and, or might qualify, we just haven't gotten tested. But I think there are a lot of kids who are struggling with executive functioning. And so if there's a way to expand this, maybe partnering with the, the library if they're offering these services. Or as you mentioned, there are teachers who are getting that training, but that doesn't necessarily mean they have a packed day, right? So then how are we like addressing those kids who don't qualify, but could very much use it to go from like being a C student to a B-plus student?
Absolutely.
I would just add to that, like if we, if this works really well in the coming school year, like we can't use Title I funding for all of our students, but we can use funding for other students. So if we feel like this is really a benefit, I think that to Venus and Sheree's points, it would be worth considering whether we have passed at making a more broader bill.
Yep, and I will definitely circle out, like, the middle school team to get a specific date to report back and to also get some more specifics around the measures that we're using.
And I think to your broader point, Sheree, it would be helpful, I think we're eager to bring to the table the things that you as a board want to spend more time on. So I think we've talked about getting together over the summer and on the front end, what are those things that you might want a lot more time for? And then those things that are just like, give us a quick update and move on. So we can kind of, you know, plan ahead for what, what matters most to you.
I'll plan on sending the board a, just kind of like a follow-up on like what things we're hoping to see, what's a reasonable timeline when we want to see it? What are some of the metrics that we'll be asking for? Because I feel like sometimes there's a disconnect. And you guys are like, I gotta get all this information. And we're like, we want to know what color it was. So, um, thank you very much.
Of course, thank you. I have one more question.
Wait, I'm sorry. Yes.
Just to make it worth your while for coming up. What is, how is this being communicated and rolled out to parents so that they can support these executive functioning efforts in this student population?
So again, speaking for the middle school team. As we enter the school year and we're connecting with the teachers, there is a, I believe there's a parent kind of family communication. If there isn't one built into the system, that would be kind of the, here are the skills that we're working on. Here's what we kind of think through in terms of reinforcing at home. So if it's kind of, can it help us to get straight to a task or where those motivation kind of things that we want to make sure kids have, there should be communication along the way from that win teacher, because it is teacher-specific to those students. And I know specifically the case managers for students who have IEPs.
Okay, thank you. IP, did you have any other questions?
No. Sorry, I'm out of order.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion?
I motioned that the Board of Education moves to approve the purchase of Smart Connect at a cost of $35,500 using Title I grant funding as presented. Second.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Trubin?
Yes.
And her Johnson?
Yes.
Right, motion passes.
10.2, approval of physical education waiver. Any additional questions or comments we've heard from the public earlier today? We were able to review everything. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question. So I don't know if I missed it, but I wasn't clear that help was also going to be cut to the extent that it was.
Um, you know, at this time, I'd like to invite up Dr. DeLeon and we have our two middle school principals, Nick Filipowski and April Kudor here as well. So if they can come on up.
Thanks for being here.
We should get some music, like on the Price is Right and people walking around.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice. That would make me more excited to come to Price is Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just want to
All right, yeah. See, you were like middle school waiver. Where's the buzzer?
Great, sorry, go ahead. So, yeah, I just was surprised, I guess I didn't make the connection that they do health ranking. And so, uh, I am a little concerned about the, the loss of health minutes. And I don't know if there was truth to the, we'll also have to seek a health waiver of them.
I think one of the things that it's important to know too is that it's not necessarily a loss but a meeting of where, what was happening at both campuses. So like the current model at Brooks is what we're moving towards for Julian, right? So it may feel like a loss, but it's also a level setting. So something that
Is that why more of the teachers work from Julian?
That's what I was going to ask.
Okay.
Probably.
What was your question, John?
I was asking if that's why more of the teachers work from Julian, because I thought that was odd that more of the teachers work from Julian.
Fair question.
And one, and you know, some of the teachers too that were part of our disprocess as well. So they, you know, were a part of that process and had that opportunity.
So the requirements are 18 weeks in the time of the
Over the span, yeah.
This span on, so that's why it's been brought down those, those six. And they go in, companion with BE, who was part of the order, these three as well.
The school code doesn't mention anything besides that because of the fact that every school district has Different minutes. Yeah, different minutes in their day, different rates in the contract, all of those different things that are localized. So it, we still believe that this is meeting everything and, and have checked on that.
Nancy?
So my, this is kind of a, a comment slash question. So this, the whole schedule is a big change for next year, which we appreciate. I mean, we, we've asked you to put in more minutes for EL, for, for language, for English, more like, more for core subjects, for math. And yet we still gave you the same amount of minutes in the day. Give you a little magic trick to do on that one. So I appreciate the, the struggle that this has been to kind of figure out and work with everyone to come up with a schedule for this next year. What are the plans to review it and check in over the next year? I, this is obviously the first test run, so it is no harm, no foul. If then the next year, it's like, whoa, that didn't work. So I'd like to find out, like, what are you looking at in terms of reviewing the year? And again, as we've been talking about check-ins, can we get a check-in mid-year to see how things are going?
We'll see. It's a finale, you know, it's something new that we need to immerse in and we transition into it. But also we need to let things settle in and troubleshoot things with our, our, our staff throughout the process. And that's something that I'm committed to. I know one of the others asked from the community was really revisit what advisory looks like and what sort looks like. And that's only work that we actually, is coming up as well, that we're able to identify the areas. So having said that, it's our intent to really come back to, to you and the community with updates, but also to work with our staff throughout this process to make sure that we are addressing those needs along the way. Yeah, so I think that the waiver, I think the waiver, from my understanding, we can go all the way to five years. We didn't go to five years. We went through three years. Also because we also are aware that, that it's a, a contract in three more years and that might signal for us a change already as it is. So being responsive to that, that's the reason why we went to three years instead of five. And then also for us to figure out things to get along the way.
That, I'd just, a quick follow-up, sorry. But it's related. So, so related to that, I just wanted to say I appreciate greatly, while I'd love to have you all come back, the fact that you are going to be checking in with teachers along the way and seeing how that can actually shift and change and work. And specifically because we're talking about the PE waiver here, time for kids to be moving, times for kids to be getting that, that wiggle out, even the middle schoolers, they still have the wiggles.
Well, certainly they do. We know.
Yeah. As you're aware, yeah.
Venus?
So sort of to that end with Nancy's question, so we are having less PE minutes. It's three days one week, two days the next. Am I saying that correctly? So there are some benefits to mental health, to getting the wiggles out. How is, what's the plan to manage the mental health and the wiggle health of our middle schoolers without having that, the PE time to help, you know, settle them?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think that's a great point. I think it doesn't, that aspect doesn't need only on a PE teacher, it's for everybody who works in a school setting. And all of us, we have to be look at for student needs. All of us need to intervene when those things are needed. But also we, as you, as you heard about the smarts, interventions, opportunities to get creative during our access time for those opportunities. But also within the length of, within what's happening during those instructional times. There's a movement, there's ways that deliver instruction, instruction can also support that, that component. And not only of, of the learning, the movement, but also the social emotional of the students as we incorporate that in our lessons. And we are attentive to that. That, that would be some of the pieces that we are looking forward. We're moving into the new dinosaur framework. We also, it's a very student-centered framework about looking through the lens of teaching about students and how we design around that. A lot of our team in school improvement is about student learning experiences. So we are planning and continue working with everybody in tuning up and really level-setting across how we work with each other to address those needs. Do you guys want to add anything to that?
I, I agree with everything you said and, and I, I would also say by changing our schedule from the block at 75 minutes to 50 minutes, just by the nature of that schedule, kids are moving more often throughout the school day, passing period time. Not that that, you know, makes a structured PE time, but there is like more movements scheduled throughout the day by making this change.
And part of that is also just cognitive shift, not just physical movement, but as far as mental health. Part of that, that cognitive shift is important. So having more of those frequently throughout the day should help as well with some of that balance.
Can I ask you another question?
I won't.
Can I ask one?
Ask the president.
Well, I'm interrupting you. This is a hard question, so I don't necessarily know that you have an answer, but I want you to think about this. And this is for you, Dr. Shah too. Once we take this away, it's going to be hard to get it back, right? Once we take away these minutes for PE, it would be difficult to put them back into the day. Stay with me for a minute, because if we do this scheduling and we all say, this did not work, we may not be able to pinpoint that it didn't work because we took away PE minutes. And I just want everybody to sort of be aware of that, that it's very likely we will not easily, I'm not saying we can't ever, but we won't easily be able to go back to adding those PE minutes in. but we won't easily be able to go back to adding those PE minutes in, just. Why not?
I think that's one of the reasons why we were intentional about the three years matching the contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because this isn't about anyone up here or anyone on the committee who said, like, let's take away from PE, right? But listen to the input of all the stakeholders, and you remember how much we involved different stakeholders and had opportunities for input, and what rose to the top was other, other priorities, right? Not that anyone's saying, we don't want, yeah, this isn't important. Um, my teachers, actually, we were all talking outside because they know how much I believe in it. But it's just, again, the time of the day, and we didn't get any more of it. So, so with those priorities, what's the balance that we heard, and we tried to listen to the community? But if we come back in three years and there is an opportunity to have a longer day or have, right, then that gives us an opportunity to rebalance our priorities with a different set of circumstances. So I think that's, that's why we're here, and, 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 you know, no new information, really. I think, um, people maybe hadn't walked down the road, and I don't know that we had even, uh, considered that we would need one until it was brought to our attention, we asked, and even in that sense, the state didn't give us a mandate that we had to do this, um, right? They, um, said, consult locally, and we're just trying to do everything the right way, um, and be transparent, um, which is why we're going through this process.
Mm-hmm. For what?
Gavin?
Thank you for all this, I know this is a lot of tough balancing, I know that wherever it landed, we, like, nobody's gonna be a hundred percent happy with it. And, uh, that, as you were saying, Nick, that things that we care about have to sort of get traded off, not because we don't care about them, but because they're competing priorities. Given that, I, I do appreciate this notion that there will be this constant assessment of it, I think that, um, no matter how much thought goes into it, you're probably gonna find out very quickly that some things don't play out the way you think they're going to, and some thing, some things may take a little longer to, to figure out, and so I think being really attentive and nimble is gonna be really critical, and I appreciate the, uh, willingness to sort of share back out with us and the broader community in a sort of open, constructive way, like, hey, this is going great, or this thing we realize isn't going as well as we had hoped, and we're gonna fix it, I think that's gonna go a long way towards building faith and trust in what we're trying to do. Just a couple of, one quick thought and then one follow-up question. The thought is, I think that, I think we're focused on PE now because we're talking about the PE waiver, obviously, there's a lot of other things that are involved in this. But one of the things that came up in the public comment and that's been on my mind is this notion of, you know, the seventeen minutes of lunch being an opportunity for kids to get physically active, and I know as, uh, with a kid who recently graduated from Julian, it's a hard thing to do at Julian under current circumstances, you know, you drive by and you see the kids hanging out in front, and there's not a whole lot to do there, so I do think that's an area where we're gonna wanna be thoughtful and creative, and about how we make that a real option for kids, like, not, not just like, hey, here's a few footballs and, you know, whatever, if you want, but like organizing things potentially, and, um, just sort of making sure that if we're committed to that actually being a PE light or whatever the right way to characterize it, you know, that we, that, that that's gonna take some effort. And then I just had a quick follow-up to John's question, because I also hadn't really thought about the impacts on health curriculum, and I know you had said this is kind of getting us on the same page with Brooks, and the, the one thing, or a thing that's really important about this, I think, is that health covers, as we heard in the public comment, covers issues that are really critical for kids at this age, like, it's not like, well, you didn't get it in sixth grade, but you'll get it in high school, or, you know, like, this is really developmentally important stuff, and, and my question is, like, have you sort of looked at how that change in format will affect the curriculum that we're able to deliver, and are we confident that we can get those essential, um, topics, curriculum, et cetera, addressed within this new schedule in a way that does them justice?
Like Dan, actually, you probably will be a good answer for, for Brooks, because they're already doing that, that structure, that covering and content.
Yeah, so, uh, our health teacher, who's been working with us for six years now, um, has designed the units within sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, has focused in on those core ideas and those concepts, and we have not had any feedback to indicate otherwise that our students aren't getting the education and the learning that they need as it relates to the health outcomes.
And, and is there communication across Brooks and Julian as Julian, how to make that transition?
I was only, I was actually gonna add to that, the thing that we're doing now, I think you have seen that middle schools coming together more, uh, and more frequent, we're designing schedules that are basically similar, where they have access for staff to connect even throughout the day at some level. Then also we're structuring a department base where they get to collaborate with each other throughout, across both buildings. So there's that cross-pollination, like, across our buildings, about best practices, what's working, what's not, and, and we have that entry point to, to also collaborate with, with the departments to feel out what's working, what's not, how we can roll this all together.
Great, thank you.
You too.
Becky?
Um, my, so yes, uh, kind of circling back on a couple of topics and, you know, rounding out the conversation about, um, the whatevs, right? So, by making a decision to waive, you know, time, because it really is time, not just days, of PE and health for middle school students, we are kind of allocating about fifty minutes for social studies, science guaranteed every single day. So when it comes to the win time, and this is again, just for informational purposes, I, I've heard, you know, that could be where we build in some structured recess time, and I guess my question is, who will facilitate those activities? And the reason for that, again, is, you know, has this been fully thought out? So, in the high school setting, we currently have eight periods of the day, yes, kids are moving, but that means more time needing to supervise students. So, right now, a lot of the behavioral issues is during unstructured times, and so what I'm hearing is we're moving from a model of structured PE health time to unstructured time, transitions in the hallways, and a, a potential for a structured recess?
Well, regarding about win time, actually, that's structured time for interventions, what I need, and they were moving into that direction, into really tailored things for students based on soc- uh, social emotional needs, functioning skills, academic needs, and that's where actually our, we're leaning into, into that, so movement intervention like that is, is not only lives there, it's also part of the daily instruction across, so you're right, it has to be structured, it has to be some sort of purpose or some sort of like system in place to support that, uh, as, as Gadi was mentioning, even like recess time, are we providing the, a structure for, for those components to be efficient, to be able to meet the student needs, it's, it's something that, that, that we are actually looking, that's a work on.
Yeah, I think that the, for the structured movement time or the, or unstructured movement time is the social time that we already have. Um, so again, not a change, one of the things that will change, that's really nice, is actually having the field then, under the new schedule, for Julian students to be able to do more activities, whereas right now, they're, you know, just in front of the school, um, not to mention all of the safety concerns that I have had with that, um, right? So, um, but that, that, you know, when we have, in the fall, winter months, when they actually do have the field, they do use that time to move, and, and, and so giving that opportunity back during that social time. Um, but win time, I, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, uh, with our middle school redesign too, is looking at programming still, um, and what are the things that we offer, so I don't know, like, is there, you know? Um, April talks about when she used to teach dog training. Um, uh, you know, like, is it just like a choice thing, gee, really enjoyed it, and, you know, do we know if, like, there are gonna be some, of course, we're gonna teach yoga, you know, classroom yoga, maybe, that would be a wonderful offering. We're just not there yet about those pieces. And again, not that PE is not important, and given a different set of circumstances, could we look to rebalance? Absolutely. Um, that would, I think, still be a desire, um, but that is just not where we are right now.
Also, like, if I can add to that, I know you mentioned about even being able to run more periods, I think, like, elementary is running a seven-day, uh, seven-hour uh, student day, where we have a shorter day, six and a half, even the high school has even longer than, than elementary, seven, plus, almost seven and a half hours. So, we are working with what we have, we have limitations on time, but also the complexities that go with, with the, uh, agreements, with, you know, your contracts, with our staff about them, how much time needs to be allocated for planning, how we organize around that, because that's important. That's important for staff to come together, work, and plan, and prepare for it, so those are pieces that it might not show, but also they are creating, uh, um, difficulties in how to.
Draggers.
How to, uh, puzzle things together, the only way.
And I think my last comment, not a question, just something to think about is, just as a trained school psychologist, working with kids that have a motor running at all times, I really do worry about our population without structured physical ed and some decision-making curriculum, such as the consent information that was provided in health, so I know they get that in high school, but I will say that we're still at a, at a good age right now to implement some of those ideas, so I'm struggling because the gra- the portrait of a graduate could potentially also say, everybody's college-bound, and we need more science, more social studies, more math, more ELA, and what about those other types of, you know, intelligences?
And I, I think that's important, that, saying that I don't, I think we're hearing, we're not getting rid of those important things from health, right? There may need to be some, like, level-setting, uh, uh, across the two, um, campuses to understand how that's done, but like, it's not that, you know? Um, and a reduction in minutes for sure, um, but, but then, because we don't have more to play with, right? So, yeah.
I was gonna say, I could actually, as, um, you lost one of my kids, you still got two. So my kids are, my kiddos are at Brooks, and the current, um, system, I will say, my kids talk about it a lot. Um, we are very, we're trying to like do a mix of gentle parenting in our household, so we, we have a lot of, like, really hard conversations early on, and we are very honest with our kids, like, they ask a question, we answer the question. Um, and one thing that has been fascinating to me is when I think I'm teaching them something, they're actually teaching me, and it's also that they learn in health. So it is a very robust curriculum, um, we, I remember my daughter was like, someone's, uh, aromantic, and I was like, wait, what? And so like, they broke down, like, aromantic, asexual, um, and, and these are, these are my sixth graders. Um, and so they talk a lot about it, they talked a lot about drug use, like, um, the, and, and I think they also do a very good job of, like, tailoring it to the audience, so like, my son just graduated eighth grade, he's able to say, oh, this will be learned in sixth grade, will be learned in seventh grade, you're gonna learn about that next time. Um, and then as they rotate it, so some kids are taking, like, actual PE, and then some are taking health, so then they're talking to each other, like, you're gonna learn about this next quarter, um, or trimester. So I will say that it, it, it works, and I understand the hesitation, so my, I guess my recommendation, um, I think that some folks are gonna watch this today, or they may see the part about public comment and go cook and, and not hear all of this, so maybe in the beginning of the school year to kind of like flush that out a little bit more, and I do think that having that, um, teacher buy-in is really important. Um, and so, maybe just something to kind of get people on board, because I wouldn't want people to watch, like, a portion of the board meeting and not know that we had this really robust, great conversation where you talked about all those things. Um, so that, that's just my only recommendation, but.
Thank you. I have, um, just two, hopefully, quick questions. Uh, so I know this is for a three-year waiver, and there's currently a new schedule coming out in the fall. Is that, does that mean you're tying yourself to that schedule for three years also?
No, I mean, I think that we're, when we discussed our scheduling, even with our committee, um, we talked about this is our first iteration.
Okay.
And there are things that we need to be thinking about that aren't currently in our schedule, that we need to evaluate, like, our career exploration, like, how are we gonna evolve that over the next couple of years, it's just.
So there's even the possibility that PE could come back?
I think that.
I know, probably not.
I, I, I think that, you know, uh, we have to evaluate where we are and then make decisions based on that.
Uh, and then actually connected to that comment, um, is, I, and so what you just said, like, how are you gonna determine whether this was worth it, I guess? So like, what are the measures you're taking? Um, because, you know, some of these PE teachers, you know, they've been teaching a long time, and they might not be here in three years, they might retire, or you might have new teachers, or, you know, and so I would, I would really encourage you to think about what your measures are gonna be now, so that you can start collecting that data, so that when you do come back, because some of us won't be here in three years, but some of us will. Um, and so then this question's gonna come back up of like, why, why should we continue doing this?
Good call-out. If I got a, unless someone has like a super burning question.
Of course I do. What is your cadence for evaluation? Like, you've told me you're, you guys are gonna keep looking at this and evaluate it, but like, what's the cadence of that?
Nice. So, uh, okay, and so, we are engaging with our, with our departments on a regular basis, like, we meet, we have, uh, uh, an opportunity to meet with them at least like once a month, and definitely that will give us a, a way to progress monitoring the, how things are happening. Um, having say that into the overall, uh, overall process of our schedule, I think definitely, uh, we're looking into assessing this, uh, every trimester, see how things are, are moving.
Okay.
I think like, reporting to you, and, and to you, of you, it will be part of our process as we're learning and sharing, having that open communication that we're staffing with you throughout.
Yeah, I, I think Luis's answer, you know, that ongoing kind of formative assessment, uh, through all the things that we do, but I do think it's an important discussion, and your question, John, about like, what is it that the board would like to see, because what's that level, what's that board level metric? I do think that that's an important, because otherwise, we might be assessing in some way, but that's important for me to know and for us to know, that what are those metrics, and I think that's, uh, the appropriate conversation for us to have as a board and superintendent and admin team, is what are those needles that we're looking to see move as a result of the things we're bringing? And that's probably the conversation we haven't had, and that's a perfect open session discussion, and we're all excited about it, because we see things, but then we want you to see the things at your level that you wanna see, and we don't wanna guess about it.
Yeah.
So I'll send, um, after, since Holly's not here, and she did kind of flag this, so I'm kind of glad that she did, so when she watches this, I'm acknowledging Holly. Uh, so when she watches this, she'll get a chance to review this, then, then I'll send out a, 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 a follow-up. So as you're going home tonight, think about the metrics you wanna see in the next couple of days, and then I will send that to Dr. Shaw. We're gonna be meeting over the summer to talk about a calendar for like, when we're gonna get updates on stuff, um, and so we can include that when we have that meeting, and then she'll be having, uh, two-on-ones with each of us, so we can continue to, um, highlight those things as well. I do wanna move on to the next thing, so if you do have any.
Yeah, we gotta vote. We gotta vote.
Yes, I was gonna say, I wanna move on to the next thing, which is voting, or getting a motion, and then, um, yeah, so, thank you guys very much, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Please.
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District ninety-seven approve the physical education waiver request to be submitted.
Second. Uh, Ms. Ross Strubin?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
No.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Uh, Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Ms. Her Johnson?
Yes, with pause.
Well, if you know that.
Please, people.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, get the wiggles out, yeah. Uh, next thing, eleven point three, click renewal.
I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of the click liability insurance that are proposed premium cost for two thousand twenty-five to twenty-six of three hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars as.
Second.
Mr. Carney?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Dr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Ross, driven.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
No pause.
Eleven point four, self renewal.
I motion that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District ninety seven approve the district's total contribution to self for the combination cooperative in the amount of four hundred and three thousand nine hundred and three dollars.
Any questions before we vote? All right.
Did you get your second?
Second.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Dr. Kim.
Yes.
Dr. Bettes.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Ross, driven.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
No pause.
No pause.
Eleven point five, Village of Oak Park I G A water meter data collection.
Oh, were there any questions or comments? Okay. Then I motion that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District ninety seven approve the I G A with the Village of Oak Park for water meter data collection as presented.
Second.
Ms. Ross, driven.
Yes.
Dr. Bettes.
Yes.
Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Dr. Kim.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Sorry to get to come down for the prices right, but next time.
Are they coming down for the next one?
Yeah.
I'm saying wrong, I'm saying it. Oh, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to find that for you, Shereen.
Yes, eleven point six is. Examp, community seller. We previously talked about this, so.
Yeah, so real quick, this was back in September. And we've been working through with Luis, John and Becky on the contract negotiations back with Examp. So this is an opportunity to come back, we're at that final stage to really sign off on the contract. It is actually two contracts. The ability to have, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but within the state law, you can only have forty percent of the main. Whatever, I'm not gonna use the word right, but whatever. The main person or the largest capacity can only have one organization or entity can only have forty percent of a solar farm. So that's why we're broken up into forty percent and twelve percent and two different farms, contracts are the same. But we want to just come back to the board, share some of this information. Becky will kind of give a quick overview to all the board members of that and answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you all for having me and nice to meet and see the board member. So just, I'll give like the thirty second overview of what community solar is and what it means for anyone watching who maybe doesn't know. So community solar is intended to make solar accessible for people that it otherwise would not be. So this is not onsite, this is completely different from anything we've discussed in the past about something that would be on the rooftop. This would be an offsite separately owned and managed by a community solar developer. And the district is just participating in the program via a discount program. So the way that it works is the the legislation, the way the program is designed in the state is that for these large developers to build these multimillion dollar assets. For them to get the credits from ComEd, they have to pass through a subscriber's utility bill. And then, so that would be you in this instance. So the credits would pass through on your utility invoice, so it'd be a negative number, a credit actually on your invoice. And then that same developer turns around and bills the district for the same amount of those credits, less the discount that you have been approved for. In this case, it's a ten percent discount, so that ten percent is what the district is able to net and save. And so it results in about fifty eight thousand dollars a year in projected savings. This is based off of last year's numbers because we have to kind of look at what you paid in the past to determine what you had estimated. Would be an estimate to pay in the future. ComEd's rates did go up pretty substantially June first, though. So I would say that this fifty eight thousand dollars is actually quite conservative. It's a twenty year contract because for a developer to make a multimillion dollar investment, they want to make sure that they have the off take for a long period of time. For someone with good credit who pays their bills, i.e. school districts, you are kind of their bread and butter. So it is a long term commitment because the life of solar is twenty to twenty five years minimum. So it's a twenty year contract with that fifty eight thousand dollars projected annual savings would be about a one point two million dollars estimated. Cash flow positive to the district for doing nothing more than signing two contracts and paying an additional invoice each month. Did I do it justice? Okay, great. And so as Aiko was saying, the reason for the two contracts is that that same legislation only allows for one single subscriber or anchor subscriber to take offset forty percent of any single field. So that they don't have someone come in and take the entire. And I also note this for anyone watching that this is accessible for anyone in Illinois, even residential. So this is a program, it seems like if you've gotten a flyer in the mail or something, it sounds too good to be true and sounds scammy. Look it up, Google it, it is legitimate and I think for residential, it's like twenty percent savings. So especially with everyone's bills going up in the summertime, you can look into it. So members of your community can also participate and secure some savings on their electric invoices.
Questions? Comments? Anybody want to sign up?
Did you? Cool, yeah.
Few years ago.
It's awesome.
Did you ride your bike here too Gavin?
I did.
Gavin, you gotta give us a date, let us know how it goes.
I, well, I've been on it for several years and I'm saving money, so I would encourage you all to do it.
All right.
Particularly if you can't, my house doesn't, isn't well situated for rooftops, so if you're in that situation, it's a good, it's a good second choice.
I wanna talk to you because we are also, all right, sorry. Okay, so can Michael?
There's not, so because there's kind of a cost to it, so there's not an action, I know it was this discussion, actions, there isn't that action. It would just be for us to send the contracts to Dr. Shaw for her to sign. But again, just wanted to build a, share the update and where we're at and then again, it's a sustainability policy, just transparency of of some of these action steps that align with the policy.
So everybody who's watching who now wants to sign up should contact Michael.
And we wanna thank you for waiting until the very last.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we have a pop quiz on our on our district initiatives for you.
Which be so glad to participate, yeah, no, this is great, thanks for having me back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very thank you all.
All right, that brings us to concluding items twelve point one, board reminder. I just wanna say graduation was last Monday and.
Only been, and Tuesday, it seems like.
And a while ago, yes. My grocery bill says the same. So the end of the school year, I just wanna just congratulate all of the graduates and all the teachers and all the families. That were able to participate. And just also, I think I was sharing with everyone earlier today that. In some really tough times right now and so just encouraging us to feel a little bit more neighborly this summer. Check in on folks, check in on our students, so we talked about mental health, check in on our teachers. There are folks that are really living in fear right now. And so just that extra like smile, extra checking in on folks will really go a long way. And I think reminding us ourselves, like our kids are listening and they're watching. I had said something that was nice so nice and my kids called me out on it and I was like, touche. So yeah, just wanted to like elevate that, we made a lot of progress and we had always agree on things, but just to be mindful of like what we're saying and how we're treating each other during these really tough times.
Thank you. Should we all join hands and start singing?
I don't wanna hold your hand. You don't wash our hands.
For the elementary schools, I'll say there was a nice event, very similar along that same weekend, end of the year bar. And it's coordinated by a committee from the P T O. And the goal is to fundraise for the incoming fifth graders, so fourth graders volunteer with their parents to fundraise for things like, everyone gets a yearbook, you know. And any of the trips that they take, things like that feel good as fifth graders at Irving. That was really nice because the rain was coming in and parents were like, you know what, can we just wait till, delay it for an hour? You should have seen the turnout was better than I've ever seen. So it was really nice for the community to come out to support that. And it also gave the outgoing fifth graders something to do on that last day of school.
All right, nothing else?
All right.
I'm waiting. Of course I have something to say.
What did you say?
Aren't we in boardrooms?
No, what was the other thing, what did you say earlier, with the caveat or the?
Of course I have something to say.
I thought she was gonna make.
With the, with the pause, yes.
Oh. No pause. I wanna absolutely say congratulations to our graduates. So exciting, eighth grade is such an awesome graduation and embarking on your high school career is super exciting. Those four years go by faster than you believe and everyone says it until you get to your senior year and you realize they were right. I also want to acknowledge all of our retirees. So jealous, but thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication and even some of the teachers that came up and spoke. Were twenty plus year teachers. And teaching is such an awesome profession, but it's really awesome for those who have made a career of teaching and have been doing. Impacting kids in such a substantial way for decades upon decades, so congratulations to them. I also want to acknowledge one of our own, Lanier is not here today. And that is because she is at an honor ceremony for her graduation on Saturday for her master's degree.
No more pauses?
No more pauses.
All right, let me hit play. Vice President, can you wanna do board assignments?
No, I don't have them set up because people were so slow responding to my emails, so I will send out.
At me next time.
I will send out the actual assignments by the end of the week so that there can be a handoff. I know a lot of the committees are kind of on hiatus for the summer, so there's not, most of them, there's not a big rush, but yeah, so look for that in your box this week.
All right. Next board meeting is August twelve.
Now you're jumping the board, board reports, what we're currently assigned to.
Oh, that's what I was asking you to do, okay.
Oh, I was gonna give the report for everybody?
No, I was asking, did you wanna do the thing?
Oh, that's why I just said no.
It's good to see you guys working out this in real time.
Transparency board. Does anyone have board assignment?
Yes.
FAC met yesterday, but Jennifer brought you guys all up to speed on where we are.
M T A C is on hiatus till the fall.
Board met and the last time we had a board meeting, the information from board was presented.
I go.
I haven't been able to attend an I G A meeting.
P T O C. Is that Holly, you know Holly?
Who's calling, you know who? Yeah, I think that's calling. I don't think they plan on that.
Sustainability Task Force.
Uh, nothing beyond the FAC update, I think.
Uh, C E C.
Um, so we are meeting again in July to look at the I G A, so everyone should be looking at their mailboxes kind of midsummer, take a little break out on the deck and take a look for any questions we might have. And then we'll be bringing that in in the fall.
I was not able to attend O P F, but Becky attended, I would have, thank you so much.
No problem. The biggest thing, they were celebrating also the Sackalaris, so that was in their, part of their conversation about awarding this DayZAC award. It will be having like an official reception of sorts later on this month, but I haven't seen, they might send you the date. And then they do have programs running in four out of eight buildings after school. And so just kind of, they're trying to spread information beyond just being a base camp, summer camp. And they're talking all about branding. And I think that was the biggest thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
O P R F, uh, Community Council.
No report.
Ed Redd.
They had their last meeting of the year, they just kind of wrapped up which bills did not get through, which ones might be revisited next year. And then some of the new bills that are coming down the pipe as they go into summer recess. One that I just kind of caught was, uh, that was interesting was, um, where'd it go? Now I don't know where it went, but they're looking at school districts, oh, here it goes, to annually report disaggregated data for law enforcement referrals. So I just thought that was kind of interesting in terms of looking at who, when police are called, who it's called for and just for their understanding some of the systemic issues that come in. But yeah, there's, there's a bunch of other legislation. I can send forward, send forward the PowerPoint if folks want, but nothing huge right now.
All right, so now, what's the next board meeting, it's gonna be August twelve. And then no flow session, I need to go to flow session, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, sorry, quickly, so we don't have any agenda yet for August twelve? I move adjourn.